Mr. Williamson wanted aggressive gavel. Good evening. Today is December, May 20. This is a regular meeting of the City Council for the city of Trinidad. Please, I'd like to remind you, if you have cell phones, turn them off. Make sure they're silent, and if you have hats, please remove them.
I'll sign up with you to speak.
Would you all please stand for the floor?
My fortunes to the fight of the United States of America and to recover it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the great and just for all.
It's nice to see so a bunch of young faces in the audience for a change instead of the regular older people. Item number one is roll call.
DeBono.
Here.
Schu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Trahill.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Lamson.
Here.
Riego.
Here. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any corrections to the agenda? I need a motion to approve. So we'll... Schu moved. Who has a second?
Second.
We'll do, Mr. DeBono. Call the vote, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Schu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Trahill.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Lamson.
Yes.
Riego.
Yes. Item number three, policy items and staff reports. Do we have any?
We don't have any today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item number four, petitions or communications oral are written. Usually there's a five-minute limit on any kind of petition or a request here in the, in chambers, but Mrs. Pachulia, who is the interim superintendent of Trinidad School District Number One, is going to speak. She's listed on the agenda, so we will give her the floor now. Thank you, Mrs. Pachulia.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so very much for having us here tonight. I'm Livia Pachulia, interim superintendent for Trinidad School District One, and I've got some great people here in the audience supporting this effort that we want to share with all of you. Errol is passing out a flyer that we have been collectively working on. Thanks to Ashley Ackerman for putting it together. We've had a committee for a while to get this project going. And before we get into the details of it, I just want to start with the first video that'll just warm your hearts right from the start. So if I may, I'm gonna get that video going for you.
That's assuming we have one.
You do. I know you do. See, I know. This is what happens because, you know, technology is like my favorite thing. Okay, here we go.
Can you all see?
See?
If you can't see, the screen, just move around.
Is it because I'm not supposed to?
Okay, we'll get it.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, no worries.
Don't agree with me.
Manny's kind of like...
I know he's glowing.
In the light.
It's reflected.
I'm so sorry.
No, no worries.
Wifi, yes, and you can help. I appreciate that.
Okay, be the greatest in the grandest field.
We'll start touchdown and cheer from the sidelines.
Go mighty, mighty cleaners.
We'll march in the band and fly under the Friday night lights.
But our field is really, really old.
We don't even have a real track.
We have a parrot pack.
Our stadium is one of the oldest in the state
and one of the most beautiful in the world.
Will you help us make it shine again?
Our track and field have been here for a hundred years.
It's one of the oldest and most scenic stadiums in Colorado.
We're proud of our tradition for private B minors.
But we don't have a real track, just a dirt path.
Our field is worn out. It's time for a new beginning.
And most schools around us have safe, modern facilities.
We're not asking for anything extra, just a chance to compete on eco grounds.
With your help, we can raise 1.3 million dollars to get a real track to get restored.
We want future generations of minors to be proud of where they play.
For over a century, this field has been the heart of our athletics and school spirit.
Today, we use it for football track, but we don't have the facilities we need.
Our track has no relay or exchange zone, so it makes it hard for competition.
Our soccer team is currently playing at Central Park. We are grateful for having a place to play, but it is not ideal for a high school competitive game.
We can't allow the limited home field condition that is consistent with the standards.
But we still show up, work hard, and hold our aim.
We're not asking for more than anyone else, just the tools to do our best.
With your help, we can raise 1.3 million to build a regulation track and restore a historic field for all sports and activities.
Help us restore the pride and honor of the century of minor conditions.
So with that... I want to start with something that's completely, utterly amazing, okay? This is a newspaper article from July 1926, Chronicle News, where the school board of Trinidad School District Number One came to City Council asking for the city to vacate the land for us to have the football field. And now here we are, a hundred years later. Don't we look fabulous? I mean, wow, right?
He reached well.
Yeah, absolutely. And so when Lisa Glorioso found this for us, and this is just ostrich, you know, I'm just so amazed by this whole thing. So if nothing more, everything that we have here to show, and you know, this is like so much fun because it's not working. We are truly a century of minor tradition, and most of you know that, right? We're the oldest school district in the state of Colorado. We have wonderful facilities. We've been so grateful for all of the support that we've gotten through best grants that have been, have enabled us to update our facilities. But our facilities are old, so the renovation to Trinidad Middle School, that's a 1920-some building, right? And, and so there's a lot of money that went into those projects, but roofs, ventilation, doors, windows, right, those types of things. Now we're trying, we're having to do the same thing at the high school, which just completed. Now we have to move to Fisher's Peak, which is over 22 years old already. And we need a new roof and different things like that. So this facility, so we've done some great work to get those facilities up to par. But this is something that has, obviously is needed for our students as well, besides the infrastructure of the schools. This is what the minor stadium looked like in 1926, right? There's the, the T, there's the old high school, there's minor stadium, and here we are today, okay? I mean, the only thing that's changed is they added an announcer's booth here in 1970, and then, of course, we added a concessions back in the 90s, maybe?
Nineties.
Nineties. So, I mean, the T even looks exactly the same, right? Almost a hundred years later, a hundred years later. So, you know, we're very excited about this project. We're not, we're not looking at a grander project. I mean, there's been a lot of conversations about moving, shifting the field, getting an eight-lane track, all of this. We'd have to tear into the stadium. We, we recognize the importance and the history of our stadium and what it means to our community. So what, the committee that we've put together, and we've been meeting for several times now, and it's been a committee of community members, school district, students, parents, all of the above. What we're really trying to get is an all-weather, three-line track, three-lane, so that way we can still have the track, at least practice on a rubber track instead of a dirt track. Back in the day, the track at least used to have the coal, coal dust, or whatever that was.
Cinders.
Cinders, thank you. Now it's not. It's just dirt. We want to get a new, a new field because, as the young lady stated in the video, our soccer team has never played on anything but Central Park, and thank you for allowing us to do that. But for them to have an actual turf field would be amazing for them. And of course, our football field, our football team as well. It impacts our band. It impacts all the students. We're looking at getting an updated sound system, which is about $44,000, and then getting some landscaping if we can, like on the sides of the stadium. So like, you know, making the T look better. We thought about where the band sits, that area, putting some grass in there so people can sit with blankets or whatever. And then just really having opportunities for the community to utilize the facility as well. Little League football, the Relay for Life, having a nice place for, for people to come and set up. So that's our hope. The turf field itself is about $800,000. The sound system's about $44,000, and then the rest, you know, we're, we're starting with the field and going from there. So basically, you know who it impacts? It impacts everyone, right? It impacts our entire community. But most importantly, it's impacting all of these people that are sitting here behind me, all of these students that have come through the halls of Trinidad High School, Trinidad School District from start to finish. And so I want to give them an opportunity. A few of them want to share why it's important that we are asking for your support tonight. So we're gonna start with Adriana Glorioso and her mom Lisa. She's a student at Fisher's Peak Elementary, and Lisa is a middle school teacher.
Hello, my name is Adriana. When I grew up in middle school and high school, I want a good stadium to run on. We're not asking for much. Please help us.
Good evening. As Ms. Pachulia said, my name is Lisa Glorioso, and I'm a teacher at Trinidad Middle School, and also a track coach, and also a proud graduate of Trinidad High School. And I'm here tonight just to speak about the importance of restoring our field and track. Our school and our city have always had a strong symbiotic relationship, as you could see from the article from over a hundred years, or a hundred years ago. And we take pride in the same community, the same citizens, the same youth. And it would just be in both of our best interests if you supported our efforts because it's important to investigate in a space that promotes health and community and connection, and we're stronger when we support each other, and this is a powerful way to show that. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Matt?
Hi, everyone. If you guys don't know me, I'm the head football coach at Trinidad High School. And so what I'm here to reiterate is how much it's gonna help everybody, for the soccer team, for the track team, for the football team. Right now, I, I don't think it's, it's good. The girls, when they play soccer, they, they don't even have a locker room. They, they go there and they use, and we're grateful for everything. They use a vault toilet, you know? Hopefully, hopefully it has tissue paper, you know, stuff like that. With this, they go on this, and they actually have a girls' locker room. Track, you know, they, they're running in the mud. I know, as far as football, we do conditioning. Majority of the time of winter, we're running in the mud as well. One of the big problems with the field right now is there's, when you're on the home side, and there is times you can't see to the visitor's side because there's a massive hump on the west side. And for the past, what do you, what do you think, Jeff, about 30 years? It has gotten just bigger and bigger and bigger, and it's, you cannot see. So we're asking for your support, and thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Danica. I'm gonna be a senior this year, and I play volleyball, basketball, and soccer. And I think that it would be really cool if we had our own field to play soccer on this year and really memorable for my senior year for future generations.
Hello, my name is Isaac. I am an upcoming junior for Trinidad High School. I play football and I run track. And over my first two years of high school, I fell in love with distance running and track. And over my last few meetings, I've been shaving time off by seconds, but my only downfall is that we practice on a dirt track. And I feel like if we were able to get a new, a new rubber track, I feel like it'd be really beneficial for me.
Thank you.
My name is Ally, and I'm gonna be a senior next year. I play volleyball, basketball, and soccer. And I think this would also be a very memorable year for me if I can share this very big moment with my friends to have a new field, a new track, and for us to benefit from it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Ackerman. I'm the director of athletics for Trinidad Middle School and Trinidad High School. And I think, you know, it was mentioned in the video, but one of the biggest things for me is I also coach basketball and travel to a lot of, not only our games, but other schools and their facilities and see what's out there. And I think a lot of times the sentiment coming back from our students is, geez, why don't we have something like that? Why don't we have something that, you know, is, is something that's a tangible thing that says that we value them and we, you know, support their dedication and, and what they bring to the table as the youth and the next generation of, you know, contributing citizens to Trinidad. And so my big thing is I think that this would be an awesome step towards showing them that we value them and that we believe in, in what they're doing and that we have their back in a very tangible way. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Pachulia. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight to speak on behalf of the football field that's over a hundred years old. I'm Deanna Pachale. I'm the 612 principal for Trinidad Middle School and Trinidad High School. And I just want you to look at these students and see that they deserve it. You know, when we went for the bond for Trinidad Middle School, it, we really just rode on the saying that all students deserve that. Why wouldn't they? Why wouldn't they deserve that? And I also know that, you know, Ashley said, kids want to have the same thing other kids have. And so it could be recruitment too for our school, and it shows unity, and it shows that we're supporting one another, and it also shows that it really does take a village. We can't do this alone. You know, when you see the number, you're saying 1.3 million dollars? Well, just like the kids said in the, the video, we don't want anything above and beyond. We just want to have what others have. We just want to be competitive. Isaac just wants to increase his speed. These girls want a memorial place to run and do all their sports. We want to have a locker room, maybe for soc, for soccer. They have to go somewhere else. So we just ask for your support in making their dreams come true because it's important. They are our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's it. We just, again, really appreciate your time and consideration. We all bleed blue. It's always a great day to be a minor, and we just really need your support for the benefit of our, our community because I think, like I said, not only will our own students benefit from this, but the community of Trinidad will benefit. It would be great to see people. I remember back in the day, people used to walk the track just to exercise, right? And that doesn't happen anymore. So I think that with our, with support from everyone, we can make this a reality. I feel in my heart that we can make it happen. So appreciate your time. Sorry that the video was a little... Oh, I told you it wasn't gonna take that much time, and I was sweating and everything. So thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Then we have any questions for Ms. Pachulia? So I guess initially, yeah, you had me at "good evening." Let's get, crack out the checks, but I think it's, it would be nice if you would direct us, Mrs. Pachulia and school, school staff, to decide how is the city gonna cooperate with what you're asking of us and keep in touch with us if you want somebody from City Council.
Mayor, with your permission, I'll follow up with Mrs. Pachulia, and we'll start talking about, wrote down 12 ideas here of how we might be able to help participate through some associations and some connections. But immediately, we'd like to start meeting with other committees and just getting some more project answers. So maybe we'll, I'll often just come back. And we'll see what our next steps might be, see the kind of progress.
One question. Have you contacted the college? Are they, because they were, Dr. Eppert was talking about doing something like that so you could both use the field. Is that anything in discussion?
We have had some discussions with the college, and so we're like in the early stages of those conversations. Definitely, it's a need for them as well because they don't, they use the same soccer field for, for their team, so definitely have had some conversations with the college as well, yes.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for coming tonight. Kim, let's see if we can send you up to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody this evening? I'm bouncing around a little bit up here. I spent most of the day with 1,300 kids. It was a great experience. I gotta say, the city did a wonderful job with the park department, board, harvest, everything else. And along with this football field, these are a lot of the future of Trinidad that we really, really got to concentrate on, get ourselves up to that point where we can make sure everybody has something to pull. So I am going to do this, of course, my favorite subject. And it's, I'm a little concerned about some of the things that have been going on out there, and I would like to discuss it, and hopefully we can come to some kind of working solution to this. There were some emails that were out there that were conversations between city staff and council, some of council. And part of the problem with it was, is that I was termed a lurker. I thought they meant looker, but I know that wasn't. So I think it probably should have been a concerned individual because there are some things that were going on there that I was very concerned about because I don't think council's being told all the information in a correct and good manner because there are just too many things out there that have created a sense of animosity between the city and our river partners for all the projects that we've done in the past. So I would just like to go through a couple of those things to kind of explain what needs to be done. I guess what brought this all out was the ordinance, which was just, was not really good. And so what we have to figure out, what we need to do, is figure out how to get those partnerships back in place so that we can all do what we need to do, which is get that river to its highest level of usage and environmental aspect. And I'm extremely happy to see Ms. Marshall back in the saddle here because she was there when we started this project 14 years ago. She was kind of in charge of grants and administering the grants and all that together and figured out what the plans were gonna be, who the partners were gonna be, contractors were gonna be, and it worked seamlessly. And we have what we have today because of a lot of her work and the work of all the partners and all the people that have been spending all their time and effort to make sure that that river is everything it can be. We have to make sure that this project's done and done correctly because there was some folks, I'll just call him Johnny, come lately, that came in later on that really didn't have the full... I don't think they had the full picture as to what the partnerships that were in place, what was going on with the partnerships, and how we'd all worked together and got things going. And we had discussions with Mr. Schumaker about what he needed to do, who he needed to talk to, how the process works. Because, you know, water is an extremely important thing in this part of the world, as well as partnerships and being able to trust each other and the whole thing. For whatever reason, he chose to ignore us or thought he knew better. I don't know. I don't know what his mind was thinking. But he actually set the city back quite a few, quite a ways because he did alienate some very important players, and one of them were people that own the water. And that's an extremely important thing that we all have to understand that that has to happen. The other thing that was brought up in a couple of the, some emails was that even if the city buys land under the river, doesn't mean you can do whatever you want to do. You got environmental, you got storm engineer, you've got flood control, you've got parks and, but all these people that are partners that have to have a say in what's going on here. So everybody should be working for the same, the same goal. So what we need to do is reestablish conversations with all the river partners that are involved and get us set up and get blueprints that will allow us to do what we need to do because you have people that have been working on that, that river for 15 years now. And it's, it's in great shape. It's gonna get even better. So what I would implore you all tonight would be to get us back involved because we can get the status back to the city as far as getting money for it, grant money, because we have people, partners, that are extremely good at grant writing and pretty much get anything they ask for. So we need to get that going again for us.
Wouldn't it? Sorry for...
No problem. I'm almost done with it for once. And the other thing is too, is we'd like you just to table the ordinance and tell you we can get this thing figured out a little bit better and get it a little bit more seamless so that everybody knows... better and get it a little bit more seamless so that everybody knows what's going on. We can all get this thing working together. Because, you know, it's the best thing that Trinidad's got going next to the football field and kids and the Water Festival. So I would just say, you know, let's just step back. Let's take a look at this. And let's reevaluate where we are and let's get to where we need to be and get it in a short period of time. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Welcome back, Tara.
Thank you so much. Juan de La Roca wants to talk about outdoor rec and the river.
Good evening, everyone. I don't come here very often. But this is a pretty important situation. I'm dovetailing off of what Howard was discussing. You know, I'm here as an expert in outdoor recreation, tourism development, economic development related to that. So you guys all know, I started a travel adventure field guide, started here in Trinidad five years ago. There are nearly 20 guidebooks that I've now done across the country. I'm a speaker. I'm a presenter. I spoke at the governor's conference here last fall in Crested Pew. I'll be at the Outdoor Economy Conference in North Carolina, working with the Appalachian Mountain Club, the Maine Outdoor Rec Office, as well as visiting Blue Ridge. Created essentially a destination here in Trinidad around gravel cycling. Lifetime Fitness is here. You know, we are now seeing anywhere between 2,200 and 2,500 cyclists a year that are probably generating 1.5 to 2 million dollars of downtown economic spending. And so I'm all over the country. And when I come back to Trinidad, I'm just amazed at how little has happened. We are not activating in the outdoor rec economy. We've had plenty of opportunity. And in fact, we are the only community that I've ever been in the entire country that has a director of outdoor recreation. And I'm still perplexed as to what this individual does. You've never had a plan. Gets paid a lot of money, 110,000 dollars a year. That's a lot of money in Trinidad. And not having a plan has been detrimental. I work with Oedit. I work with towns across the state of Colorado. I've been in Fruta. I'll be in Sterling, maybe in Crested Pew, Gunnison, Ridgway. And I know that a lot of the partners there in Denver with Oedit, Doco, they would love to see things happen here. But currently, there's not that atmosphere to get that stuff done. And, you know, I did hear about the emails. I went through and discussed those emails. It was really disheartening to know that there's a staff member who is basically working against people who are doing good work. Members of the river partners, I talked with a lot of people at the state level on the things that they're doing. And there's, you know, a lot of enthusiasm. So this ordinance, the situation with outdoor rec, it's really not cool. And it's time that, you know, something be done to address it. Because, you know, when I moved here 10 years ago, we had Blues Fest that drew 6,500 people. We had Art OK that drew 9,000 people. Right now, the last thing standing is this gravel cycling tourism piece. And, you know, we have a number of businesses that are not doing well. One in particular I can openly talk about, which is Almax, this place I go to all the time. I talk to people from around the state, people coming from out of state to come ride their bikes. If that place isn't here, we're going to lose this tourism economy that we're supposedly building here. So I would hope that, you know, moving forward, that there's going to be some real discussion internally here to think about, like, what is this going to look like? Are we really committed to building an outdoor rec economy in Trinidad? Because we have all the resources. We have all the, all the ingredients are in place. We have partners that want to see it happen. But it seems, you know, that there doesn't seem to be real interest in seeing it happen. You know, this has been a phenomenal situation. This has been a huge success across the country. And it started in Trinidad. And I had pushback. I had resistance from our own local government when I did it. And it's really just disheartening to know that we still have people that are working really hard in this community to do cool things. And we have members of our city staff who will push back on it. So my hope is, you know, that you guys really think about this. Really think about what's happening. And, you know, we're going to see our utilities going up 7% every year for the next...
One minute. Sorry.
Yep. 7%, you know, for the next several years. And we're going to start, you know, not allowing things to happen that will, you know, hopefully alleviate some of that as residents. So, yeah, please, start addressing this. It's important. And it's necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Eric Shepherd on Main Street Live.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. We are on an agenda item later on. And it's really at your pleasure, whether you would like me to say anything at all about our proposal, which is coming to you tonight at this point, or to wait until it comes up later on in the agenda.
We can't interact with you.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. Oh, okay. I want to say just a couple of things before we get to the agenda item. And that would be that we are a piece of that tourism economy. We are an important part of the community. Our partners are here this evening. Some of our new partners are right here, the members of the Trinidad Triggers. We're working with them. There are board members here, audience members, and volunteers here. It's bigger than it seems, I think, from the outside. And it affects every aspect of the economy. I was listening to the new superintendent talk about the schools. They are one of our partners. In fact, I just met with her about trying to find a way to strengthen the ways that we work together. So as you consider our proposal later on, know that it's not just, you know, we're going to redo some plays. We're really active in the community in a variety of ways with a variety of partners that are a part of what is really important about what makes Trinidad great. So I wanted to thank all the folks who came out here this evening. Some of them have practice to go to. I have rehearsals to go to. So they may not be able to stay for the entire thing. But thank you for the opportunity.
Mike McDaniel wants to talk about a marketing campaign.
Thanks, council. It's actually about two words of marketing. But I wrote marketing down, and then I couldn't write two words. I wanted to get something on your radar that you may or may not be aware of. And it relates to the quality of the tourism marketing that's going on for Trinidad right now. I'm sure you all agree that, as we've heard earlier, tourism and outdoor recreation, oh, I should also say, my wife and I own Trinidad Kayak Company. We rent kayaks and paddleboards at Trinidad Lake. So we're fully invested in tourism and outdoor recreation in Trinidad. As I think most people are. Because with the demise of marijuana and the lack of, I don't know, manufacturing, whatever else there is, you know, tourism and outdoor rec can definitely be a backbone of the economy here. And I think we all agree it should be. But it's not being handled terribly well. There were some incidents last summer that were problematic, that were very frustrating. And it started already again this year. And I don't want to just sit back and hope that it gets better. I thought I would come here tonight and ask that some folks do something to make it be better. It's May. It's not even summer yet. Let's fix this thing. Last year, you may not know, or you may know, really, it's social media posts is what I'm focusing on. And we have a marketing agency named Destination IQ that's hired by the city. I think they craft the Facebook posts. But I would hope that there would be some sort of local review of those. And I'm not so sure there is. Last summer, there was a restaurant guide that went out that about half of the restaurants didn't exist anymore. Completely unacceptable. Completely unacceptable. I don't really blame Destination IQ for that. Because they don't live here. They're up in Salidas. But somebody here should be reviewing those posts and know that's not acceptable. There was also a post about activities at the lake, which hits close to home for me. And they highlighted windsurfing, which I don't know if you've looked at participation in windsurfing in the United States since like 1990. But it's dropped off like the cliffs on Big Bird's Peak. Like windsurfing ain't a thing anymore. Paddle boarding is a big deal at the lake. Paddleboarder is not mentioned at all. It's pretty simple stuff for somebody to get right. And it's not gotten right. That was last year. This year, about two, three weeks ago, there's a Facebook post highlighting patio season, highlighting Club 14. Can anybody tell me what happened to Club 14 over the last few weeks? It was closed prior to this Facebook post going out. Who allowed this Facebook post to go out that highlights Club 14 when it's not open? This is an issue. There also have been typos. They're just terribly written. I don't feel like there's any local review. I thought that that was what the LTAB board was going to be doing to make sure that these posts were accurate. But now LTAB's been completely eviscerated. So I don't think there's anybody at the helm. We're heading into the summer season, and our social media marketing, tourism marketing is abysmal. It's embarrassing. If I came into this town and went to a restaurant that was closed, maybe two, maybe three, maybe four, I'd probably think this town's kind of a joke. And I'm never going to come back here again. I'm never going to tell people they should go there. Because what a fail. What a tremendous fail. I'll also add, there's a billboard when you're coming down Rattone Pass. Trinidad True Outdoors. St. Jude's website called Trinidad True Outdoors, which used to be our visitor website. Doesn't exist anymore. The website's closed. So I'm coming into Trinidad from Texas. I go to the website. Not good. I go to Club 14. Closed. How am I feeling about my visit to Trinidad so far? Because I don't think I'm feeling really good about it. So I won't take a lot of time. That's the gist of my messaging. Somebody needs to be caring about our tourism messaging and making sure it's accurate and making sure it's typo free.
One minute left. I'm sorry.
No problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
And I really think it needs to be not somebody. It needs to be somebodies. It needs to be some people. There should be a local crew that's driving tourism marketing this town. I've lived in a couple of ski towns. That's how it works. It's not a one person. It's a group of people. We agree on the messaging. And we make sure that what goes out is accurate and compelling. That's what I'm asking for. Please. Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco.
Now I have your phone number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else did it either?
I know, but I know how to get there.
That's why I got that.
Thank you. I have one piece of correspondence. I'm just, it was on the day of...
These two days are tough. How could you call?
We are all invited to the Trinidad State College Adult Educational Services GED graduation tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. at the Masari Performing Arts Center. Okay. Item number five, council reports. Mr. Williamson.
There are no reports for tonight. Some upcoming meetings, however.
Mr. Thurman.
Tomorrow night, our correct will be meeting 6 o'clock in Space to Create tomorrow night. Everybody's welcome here. Come and try and say peace.
Tuesday, Tuesday, May 13th, we have the CML District Meeting in Palo. Had the pleasure of going with Ms. Garrett, Ms. Valenchett, Ms. Marshall, and Ms. Taves. We attended it there. It was a legislative update for the district. We, we went through over, each one of us goes and presents what our city is doing and our accomplishments. Kind of to keep everybody up to date in the state, you know, in our little region of what we're doing. And our list was immense, which was wonderful. So, you know, between pickleball, alley A's, skate park, River Park Development Designs, the Santa Fe Trail, and all of our infrastructures, we literally kind of blew them out of the water. So which was kind of a nice thing for our little community here to be able to do that. As well, after we were all done with the meeting, they asked for volunteers for who would host. So we are the lucky winners of that. We will be hosting the next district meeting here in Trinidad. And also, we got to go on a fun riverboat ride. That was really neat. We got a good history lesson on the Great Flood of 1921 in Palo. So it was a great piece of information. And what I loved around there, as we're going through, they showcased their art, their sculptures, with, you know, all the way around the park. And it was just a wonderful experience. So I encourage that as one of our sister cities. So if you ever get a chance, ride the Riverwalk, go down there. I know we all just drive by it. But stop and take time to see that. And soon, hopefully, we'll have ours. And everybody will be able to be down here to enjoy ours as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
What is the district? What is it? Is it supposed to...
It'll be the Fall. It'll be the Fall.
Mr. Scher.
I don't have any report. Our meetings come out next week.
Mr. DeBono.
The only thing I have is there's a Veterans Coffee and Tea Social that's going to take place at the Champions Building, 127 North Commercial Street, from 10 to 11:30 a.m. And it's free for all veterans, their spouses, and guests. And this is compliments of Kangaroo Coffee on Commercial Street.
The Triggers opener is on June 1st. And that's the day that the contractor who's working on the glove that's going to be done, that should be complete by then. So people come out and see that in the Triggers. The Arts and Culture, too, are putting out a new, they put out a request for proposals to put out a new walking map of the art in Trinidad that will date it.
When is June, what day is June 1st?
Sunday.
Sunday. I have to apologize. I've been under the weather for the past couple of weeks. And I've kind of depended on Mr. Williamson and other members of council to pitch it for me. But I want to thank you, Aaron, for doing that. You notice I have the small agenda and you have the lunch.
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. It's really nice to know I have somebody that packs me up when I can't make it. Also, because of my ill health lately, I was supposed to make, present a proclamation to the Boris Nestus family. He was, he and his family were featured in the Veterans Appreciation Day Parade on Saturday. But if you all haven't heard Sergeant Nestus's story, he was a young man. He was 22 when he died. He served in Korea and was killed. And they just identified his remains in January, January of 2025. So they are going to lay Sergeant Nestus to rest on June 20th. And the family asked for a proclamation. So I want to thank former mayor Phil Rico, because he's a green jacket with the Army. I asked him to do it for me. So I appreciate the backup support I've been giving. That's it. Item number six, consent agenda approval. Item 6A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of May 6, 2025, and special meeting minutes of May 12, 2025. 6B, new fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license application filed by Maverick Incorporated, doing business as Maverick Number 775, at 16 Fort 20th County Road, 71.1, set for public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on July 1, 2025. Item 6C, approval of bills totaling 577,901.5 cents. 6D, approval payroll from May 10, 2025, through May 23, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So do.
Second. Okay, Williamson and Schu. Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinh?
Yes.
Ogultrin?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes, with the click qualification. I was absent at the meeting of May 6. So I cannot, I cannot approve those meeting minutes. But I approve all the rest. Okay, item seven, 7A. I don't want to give my number. 7A, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 13 Parks and Recreation of the Trinidad Municipal Code by adding a new section 13-4 concerning regulation of certain commercial recreational activities and work in and on the Purgatory River Corridor and amending and renumbering the penalty clause for violations. The hearing is now open.
Mayor, I'll be taking this item for staff today.
Okay.
We would, we appreciated all of your feedback that you gave us at the work session on the 12th of May. Staff is in the process of beginning to meet out to stakeholder, reach out to stakeholders, as Mr. Lackey indicated today, that are extensive. Our intention is to bring this back completely packaged as two different ordinances, as you've directed us. We're going to do this, you may not see this for a few weeks. We want to make sure We wanna make sure that we have spoken with every single stakeholder involved. I did have meetings scheduled last week, which got canceled when I was ill. So, we are starting that back up next week. So, at this time, we'd just like you to proceed based on the direction you gave us in starting over with this policy, okay? Thank you.
Ending other comments. Okay, the hearing is closed. Second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 13, Parks and Recreation of the Trinidad Municipal Code by adding a new section 13-4 concerning regulation of certain commercial recreational activities and work in and on the Purgatory River Corridor and amending and renumbering the penalty clause for violations. Do I have a motion? You can move to.
I'd make a motion to, um, kill, uh, this ordinance. Kill's a stroke, boy, just kidding, just kidding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Truque, second, call for the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinhale?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes. Item eight, unfinished business, we have none. Item nine, miscellaneous business. Item nine A, consideration of lodging tax advisory board funding requests.
And Mayor, I'll be taking this item as well.
Go ahead.
Yes, you know, getting my workout. So, in absence of a lodging tax, um, in absence of the lodging tax, um, board being seated, there is in the ordinance an allowance for the low, the staff formed lodging tax committee to review these applications and bring them forward. Were we not to do that in absence of a seated volunteer board, we would just be stacking up these requests. So, what has been happening in pursuit to us advertising and trying to seat the lodging tax board is staff has been meeting to review these requests and we've been making recommendations to you. I do wanna let you know, we have one solicitation to sit on lodging tax board. We do have a second solicitation that is welcome to sit on, on whatever board we might need them. We will be bringing them forward to interview with you so that you may consider their seating. But in the meantime, we felt it was important to go ahead and bring these requests forward. So, what we're doing in reviewing these is we're looking at the tradition and the previous guidelines that were adopted, which said that when you bring forward a new event, we would consider a $10,000 request. When you bring back an existing event for a second round of funding, we would consider a $5,000 request. This is longstanding tradition, it goes back to some guidelines that were established by the previous tourism board. So, without the lodging tax advisory committee, the staff committee has been adhering to those guidelines and making our recommendations. I wanna remind you, these are recommendations, that you actually hold the power of the purse in these recommendations and therefore, we are bringing them forward for your consideration, but it is your decision how we fund these, okay? So, we have two requests. One was a funding request made by Main Street Live. We are recommending, their original request was $20,000. Uh, we did review their application and we're recommending five. That recommendation is based on the guidelines I just, um, alliterated to you. So, I know we have, do have someone in the audience to speak for that application. I'm leading up to council and Mr. Downs to determine whether we wanna bring them forward, to have that discussion. If you do, we can do that. If not, I'm going to the next request, so what is your pleasure?
I think Mr., is it Mr. Shepherd?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Come on down, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Yay!
Let's hope the price is right.
Do I look like Drew K?
You didn't say, "Come on down."
No.
The physical evidence is not. It was a council and head staff, thank you for allowing me to, uh, to speak today. Um, I wanna address a couple of things. One is the, the, uh, nature of the request. It was for considerably more than, uh, the guidelines say and I am aware of that and I'm respectful of it, uh, and understanding of it. Two things to say about that. One of them is, uh, the request would not have been made were not the need great. Uh, and it is absolutely true that the organization, uh, is finding it difficult in this current economy. Uh, nearly all of our, and I would also, all of our contribute, our contributed income is down. Uh, our box office is up, but you may or may not know that no community theater in the United States makes it on box office income. Very few commercial theaters do. They have corporate backers, right, and investors that allow them to do that. But community theaters cannot survive on box office. So, even though it's better than it has been, uh, and I think that's a testament to the work that we're doing, uh, the shows that we're selecting, uh, and the quality of the programming and the upgrades we've made to the building itself, that is not the only solution. And, uh, every other sponsorship opportunity, uh, that has existed for the theater prior to my getting there has been reduced or eliminated. Uh, and so, thus the reason for the ask. Uh, another reason, uh, to ask more than, uh, the guideline was is that, uh, it is an odd way of doing, I believe I understand the logic behind it. But in essence, what the, uh, the guidelines say is is that if you're successful, we're gonna penalize you by giving you less money, right? Uh, and, uh, I, I understand why, uh, that might be a consideration. You know, once you're up on your feet, you get to go. Community theaters don't operate in the way that other organizations do. We depend upon, "What have you done for me lately?" Show business is that way, right? You know, we might like Matthew McConaughey, but if his next movie isn't any good, we're gonna think seriously about whether or not we're gonna go again, you know? Uh, and, and that is the kind of business that we're in. It is, uh, a moment by moment, uh, show by show, uh, kind of experience. And organizations that do well, in, in my opinion, especially those that serve the community and the myriad ways that we serve the community, ought to be encouraged, ought to be, uh, supported, not, uh, in effect penalized for being successful, for sticking around, uh, which we have done since 2002. Another consideration is the, what I alluded to, is is that we do, uh, our program 12 months a year. Uh, since the time of this application, uh, we have added six new activities, uh, to bring audience in. Uh, and that's partly because, uh, we want the, the income to, uh, you know, ameliorate the financial situation, but it's also because people came to us with ideas. We had professional musicians here from Seattle to perform a concert two weeks ago. Uh, we have a comedy show because there are two comedians who are doing a national tour and they wanted a spot to fill, so, uh, on June 4th, uh, they will be, uh, doing, uh, part of their national tour in Trinidad. Uh, there's another group, uh, that we've started, uh, working with, uh, the, uh, a series of cabarets, which involves some people from Raton and from Trinidad. We do a show, uh, here in Trinidad. The next day, we do it at the Schuler, uh, in Raton. And this is now an ongoing series because, uh, it was successful for us and it also encourages our artistic organizations and our civic organizations, our, our cities and, uh, artists, individual artists, to work together. Uh, we're also, uh, we also were approached by one of our sponsors to do a camp and so, we're now adding a camp in the fall, uh, once school starts. Uh, and it's free of charge to kids. Uh, and that's all happened since the application. There will be more events that, uh, we are continuing to hold. So, we're always exploring opportunities. We are not simply standing there going, "Please, give us money," you know? Uh, we are saying, "We are taking our own fate into our hands, but, uh, we, we really do need your help." Uh, and we are active 100% of the time. Uh, there are people here who should be in rehearsal. Uh, there are people who are over there who couldn't be here because they're in rehearsal and after this, I am going to rehearsal. We're hardworking people, right? Uh, and, uh, we recycle, uh, furniture, actors, uh, you know? We're, we're very judicious with the resources, in other words, that, that were granted. Uh, we get them, we get the most bang for the buck possible. The, the other thing I would say, uh, that, uh, makes us different in a way, I think, is is that, not only are we not an artifact like a statue, you know, uh, or a, a festival that might, or a concert that might go on one weekend, uh, we, uh, affect so many areas of the community. Uh, you know, our partners are the Trinidad Youth Club, uh, the, uh, the Soup Kitchen and I are, are working together on, on a summer plan, right? Uh, we, uh, work with the city, of course, I just met with a new superintendent about to, uh, increasing our level of cooperation with them. You may or may not know that their program is, is in hard times right now. That affects all of us. It affects the opportunities that kids have, uh, and they would, they have the choice, you know, to go to another, uh, school district, uh, where they have a better drama program. Uh, and we can help train some of their students. We are also working with Trinidad State College to help grow their program in the same way. So, uh, we are part of, uh, uh, an artistic ecosystem that is much bigger than just the shows that we do. Uh, all of which says, "We're a little bit different than the other organizations that you're accustomed to funding with, uh, the lodging tax." Uh, so, uh, having said that, uh, I would love to answer any questions you might have about our application, our organization, um, or the shirt that I wore today, that's fine.
Here, do you have any questions?
Why $20,000?
Um, I, um, I chose that number because, uh, the, looking back at the history of the organization, five is what was supposed to, uh, have happened, you know, in the past. We were granted 10, uh, I'm not sure exactly why, uh, the year before and it was, uh, more than that the year before, it was more than that the year before in looking at our records. And that restores us in a way to funding that we, uh, might have lost, depending on how you, uh, view that situation. It is also, uh, an extraordinary request, given the, the challenges that are facing our organization uh, this year, that, which are, uh, unprecedented since COVID, uh, really for us and certainly since we, uh, reformulated ourselves as a community theater instead of as a professional theater, that also did community shows. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. DeBono?
No, no questions, just I've enjoyed all of our interviews. I know a lot of the sponsorships have been pretty minimized as of now. Like we, uh, spoke in our interviews and I know, you know, pretty much you're in dire need of allocated funding, which is not easy to come by in this economic turnaround. But, uh, just appreciate everything you do for the city and, and for the Kennedy and hopefully, the, uh, the plays will go on.
Well, I don't have anything either.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time, appreciate your guys' hard work with the, the theater. Um, I have no questions, I just wanna say thank you very much for your, uh, dedication to the, the arts.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr..
Yeah, thank you for the element you bring to Trinidad, um, you and everyone that works on that. I was, uh, curious, was, is there an itemized list of what the 20,000 would be used for?
Uh, it's outlined in, in our request, what, uh, we would use the funds for.
I mean.
And, and should further documentation be needed, we're happy to provide it.
Okay, um, then, um, I'm sure that this is not something that would be, uh, easily obtained or is probably tracked, but, you know, um, uh, maybe expresses potentially a percentage, what percentage of an audience is from town versus out of town, you, do you know?
Um, we do have box office data, uh, for everyone that, uh, buys a ticket through, uh, credit card, uh, purchases. Uh, our, if you were to look at the service area of the San Isabel Electric Cooperative, it exactly matches ours. We have people coming from, uh, you know, Walsenburg and I know this because I submitted a grant to the San Isabel Electric Cooperative and they asked for that exact data. So, you know, Walsenburg, La Junta, uh, Florence, Frye, you know, Weston, uh, go on, Branson, any, anything that's within 50 miles or so, uh, we have audience from there, as well as from, uh, New Mexico, of course.
Okay.
Uh, so that there are out of, you know, there are out of towners who come to our show, sometimes specifically for that. Uh, there are people who have family in Denver who come down to see them, you know, on the regular. It's happened a number of times with, uh, one of our, uh, actors in particular, who moved here from Denver a year and a half ago.
I have, I have no further question.
I have a question. Who's the staff representative, is that you, Terry?
It's me tonight, yes, thank you.
So, when you say there's a balance of $40,000 in the festival funding, is that for the remainder of the year?
It is right now and I'm, I'm messaging with, uh, Ms. Everett, our finance director. We've actually collected less revenue in the first quarter.
Right.
But if I might suggest, maybe we have Mr. Shepherd sit down and we consider the second request, then I'm happy to answer your questions about our funding levels.
All right.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, thank you, you've actually brought up a point, uh, the, the language of the charter says that the, the council has discretion to, to add to that amount and, uh, we would be very grateful for that consideration.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, the second request is from Mount Carmel. They have requested $7,500 and the board reviewed the application and recommended.
You can sit down.
I am gathering my stuff. I love Mount Carmel, but I'm not here for that.
Sorry, ma'am, thank you.
And is recommending a grant of $5,000.
And I don't know if Mount Carmel is here, Mayor?
No.
Okay. Okay, great, so we have the two requests. We followed the guidelines in making our recommendations. Currently, the first quarter, we've collected less than anticipated in previous quarters. Um, the tourism fund operates on quarterly receipts and until we see a lodging tax advisory committee, what I might suggest, council, is, Mr. Shepherd brought up some great points about how our guidelines were set up. We might need to look wholesale at, look at a different way of approaching this. One thing that the traditional tourism board did that I liked, they actually collected the tax revenues. Then they announced a grant round. They announced how much was available and they set the guidelines for that grant round. It's kinda hard to anticipate because if you increase these requests, we actually don't know what's coming in the next few months and you may be sitting here in July or August or September and really wanna fund something and we just don't have the funding at that point. So, I do think Mr. Shepherd's point's well made. I do think we need to look at how we're granting this. I'm a little uncomfortable with changing the guidelines on the fly in the middle of an application, in the middle of a council meeting, without us actually ceding that lodging tax advisory board and bringing forward, changing guidelines. But of course, it's your discretion and we're happy to do.
I have one thing that I think is interesting is that, um, the way this is being analyzed is as an event. And Main Street Live is not an event.
It's not, yeah.
So, I think Mr. Shepherd made a lot of good points about the broad spectrum of what they do for this community beyond just one show, um, way beyond that. And so, I think we're analyzing this request under a framework that doesn't fit. Um, also, I'm, I'm not, don't know what, excuse me, about the Mount Carmel request, but from a proportion standard, they, we're giving them 67% of what they asked.
Correct.
And we're giving Main Street Live 25% of what they asked. So, that just doesn't seem fair. I think I would prefer to, um, bump up Main Street Live significantly, at least 10 to 10, um, and then have them come back later at some other time during the year. I don't know if they're permitted to make more than one application.
I think we need to look at the overall guidelines to answer that question.
So, I, I just think, I don't think we're looking at it the right way. Mr. DeBono?
I, uh, I agree with Councilwoman Ogletree, I, the percentage, I taught that, 25%. A lot of festivals are being granted X amount of money for three-day weekend and Main Street Live, and I've been going to plays now for eight years now, December, January through December, so I feel like it's warranted, justified to possibly bump that up.
Mr. Shu?
Cheryl?
I knew the name of you.
I'm not letting you off free. You've been off free for the last couple of times. What I'm concerned about and that is the, the, the money coming in on the lodging tax, is they keeping up with it or, like, things not coming out right? And I think that's a big concern that we need to straighten out to find out what, what's going on. Cause I meant, you mentioned that before, that a lot of that, they weren't doing it correctly or something.
Well, before, we were just, we, we received a lot of lodging tax all throughout the year. We built up the reserves nicely, while with the economic downturn, that's not the case anymore. We originally, um, anticipated $800,000 revenue and at the end of the year, uh, we dropped that to $740,000 and what's come in the first quarter, I don't, I don't know that we're gonna meet that threshold. $63,000 was budgeted for events such as this. Uh, we've given out probably $20,000 so far. If we turn this to 30, you know, $10,000 more plus 15 for, uh, Mount Carmel, you know, we nearly wiped it out and I know there's three other organizations that are gonna be requesting funding. We're almost at the point where we should turn it into the marijuana, uh, practice of Pago. So, when we receive it, then we can allocate it. -then we can allocate it. And obviously, these events are already happening, but maybe we pull back after we fund this round, and then turn it into Pago. We're just not seeing the collection as we anticipated.
This is not an easy consideration, and your points are well made about the theater and the year-round considerations, but I do think we're going to have to look at how we are managing this. And right now, with the lodging tax receipts coming in, I would just be cautionary.
And of course, first quarter is always less than anticipated.
It is.
But it's less than what we received. Last year, it is timed, you know, timed six percent, so, because we did increase to six percent, but it's not where it would be considered, what last year we received.
And then I would just say, the last consideration is that, and maybe I'm out of step, maybe this is a conversation we need to have with lodging tax advisory and bring back. But what we're funding from this source really needs to be for events that are then creating lodging tax, so that we are replenishing the fund. So, at some point, I think we do need to look at the balance of what we're funding out of the tourism tax, and we need to be funding events that are actually recovering tourism tax. The point was made earlier about events like Articade, or events like Trinidadio that filled hotel rooms. So, if we're seeing the drop in hotel rooms, then we're going to be losing less and less tourism tax. So, I do think it's going to become a policy discussion for you to consider how we grant this money, and the events that we're granting it to, in trying to also build lodging tax. I apologize, Ms. Navarre, I didn't mean to step in and add that.
Mr. Trujillo, do you have a question?
There's a lot to consider there. I really honestly think we're going to need, we, I'd like to request a work session, if we can, at one point, over, to go over complete policy on the out tab, how we're doing this, so this way we can get it clear, and a full understanding on our end as well, on what we can and can't do, and what we're there. It's kind of hard, because I do, I do see all points all the way across. I see that, you know, yes, we need to, we need to fill beds. I'm kind of curious, like, are we bringing in actors that do stay in hotels, and that are, we are generating revenue that way? I don't know if it is a tourism driver, in a way, because I can see that a lot of people do travel to come and see our play, because I do know that. Our community enjoys it massively. It's something people look forward to. I know a lot of, you know, my clients and a lot of people I've spoken to at the senior set, they enjoy this. This is something that, I, I'm kind of fearful that it may go away.
Yeah.
That is what I'm truly fearful of. I don't know if this is going to be the sustaining thing that helps, but I think you can keep it going. I kind of am in agreeance to move it a little different in the direction if we possibly could, but something that's feasible, maybe a little advisement on that to see where would be safe, but something a little, because you guys have, you have all the numbers that we got, I, they're not in here, just the one, so-
We have sixty-three thousand dollars right now available.
If we pull in seven hundred and forty thousand dollars this year. I don't know that we're going to pull that in.
Yeah, we really need to read that.
We've only collected-
How we disperse this.
We do.
Okay, so like right now, so just for full understanding, are we pushed down on the same page, this money doesn't exist that we're giving?
No, at this point, no. We've collected a hundred and twenty-two thousand for the first quarter, and so we, of that ten percent is available to disperse, that's five thousand dollars. So, we're way over at this point. We're counting on, of course, second and third quarter, because those are our best quarters. I'm sure they're going to meet at least what we've built out so far.
We need to be considerate of that.
Yeah, and that's something, I was kind of thinking, like, with that, with all that information going through there, there's a potential for them to revisit next quarter, of course.
It's not, it's not outside the guidelines if they exist right now.
Okay, yeah, so quarterly, yeah, okay, that makes more sense to me to understand where we should be, and thank you for that clarification, Cheryl. I really do appreciate that. Yeah, I think I know where I want to go.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Williams?
No questions.
Mr. Williams?
So, I think, thanks for coming up. I think, I think it's important that, as has been already indicated, it's important to consider the event, the organization's impact on, you know, returning money to the hotel industry, that's what is generating this. And it's something that's kind of hard to, at least from this currency measure, the impact of that, so I think, well, I think that it is a really, really important request. It's something that we need to consider further. So, I too would just second the request for a work session, and maybe flesh that out a little bit, and hopefully, there might be opportunity to revisit this request, and at that point, we may have better understanding of future received dollars. Cheryl, I was going to ask, is, and I may be misremembering this, but I think that Councilman Shu alluded to it, there was a question if the, if the funds, not, not on the city side, but if the funds are being reported properly from-
So, we had two establishments remit at three percent. Since then, we've had one of them paid, and we've invoiced the other for the other three percent. Haven't received it, but we're confident they're going to catch it up.
But that, I mean, that's not going to amount to a major windfall, though.
So, the amount that I gave you is counting.
Oh, okay, if that is counting when that's remedied.
It's an accrual.
Okay, understood. I have no further questions, ma'am.
I have a question for Ms. Navarre. What is the allocation for Quality of Life? Kind of interest under the-
So, we, we have event funding awarded for qualifying application, that's sixty-three thousand. We originally had seventy-four thousand, but we put eleven thousand towards Arts and Culture, which was a request. We also put ten thousand dollars towards the Main Street Board, so, I mean, a lot of these funds are tied up with that. We also have thirty thousand for Santa Fe Trail Days, plus the additional fifteen thousand, however they are, still working on collections, which is going very well. And then we have forty-seven thousand dollars for trails and recreational development. That hasn't been allocated or appropriated thus far, so if anything, perhaps that money is available. I know that Lodging Tax Board is very, they have strong requests for that amount, for trails and recreational developments. Other than that, a lot of it's tied up with advertising, marketing, the Rat's Home Visitor Guide, Destination IQ, radio advertising, website hosting, there's a little five thousand set aside for training and travel, so it's pretty locked down.
The reason, excuse me, the reason I asked about that is because some of the money from the lodging tax is to go to Quality of Life, and I think this is, the Main Street Live goes to Quality of Life significantly in Trinidad, and so I think that also weighs in favor of increasing the allocation to, and I think that one of the speakers earlier made some points about perhaps some questionable decisions that have been made regarding marketing and tourism that need to be fixed. And if we are allocating money for that, we should be sure that it's being spent wisely and effectively, because that's, that's what gets people to Trinidad in hotel rooms, is that kind of thing. So, I think we really need to look hard at that, at a work session as well. I understand that's not really what we're talking about right now, but, but I strongly feel like five thousand is not adequate for the benefit of that. Just can you see this from a-
So, I have a question, Cheryl. So, on this note, it says balance for festival funding and lodging tax budget is forty thousand dollars. Is that for the first quarter?
So, sixty-three thousand is available. I believe we, you have appropriated twenty thousand so far. So, that leaves, she should have said forty-three thousand.
Okay. Okay.
So, forty-three thousand less these will give us thirty-three thousand, and unless, you know, there's more, but I have feeling, well, I know there's three other requests that we're sitting on.
That's assuming all tax receipts are received.
What is the total of the remaining requests that I might ask?
You have not reviewed them yet.
Okay.
If we follow the same guidelines, I think you can assume approximately fifteen thousand.
I'm concerned for our first quarter tourism tax receipts. I am, but I'm somewhat optimistic, because in January, every weekend in January, it's snowed, and Trinidad shut down, so it's like, I'm assuming that that's an exception, instead of a pattern. That being said, you know, we all have to tighten our jaws a little bit, but I think you're right, Cheryl. I think we need to do pay-as-you-go.
I, just to be safe, I, it's just changed so much over the past three years. Everything has, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm cautiously optimistic, but, so that being said, any questions, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Navarre. Do I have a motion?
That we allocate, rather than five thousand to Main Street Live, that we allocate ten to Main Street Live, and five to the Mount San Gabriel.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's the two erands. Call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Shu? Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego? Yes. Yes, Council.
Item ninety, consideration of the annexation agreement with Maverick Incorporated, Maverick North Annexation.
And I'm not doing this to me.
I'm sorry, I'm a minister. You need to take a break.
Evening, Mayor Council. Just the one item for me tonight, so, seven like last night. So, typically, we'd like to get this annexation agreement completed at the annexation, if it's completed last meeting. We, Maverick had some issues with their legal team reviewing it, and it's just more, it's a big company, and they have a lot of stuff going on. There was no issues with it, really, no back and forth or anything like that. Very similar with Love's annexation agreement, and just, you know, develop, make sure the plans that we developed according to city regulations going forward. There's RV dump station, that's a ten thousand dollar fee, that's the same as Love's, so they're both getting the same treatment there. That's just to account for, there's some extra dumping that we can't really track, because sewer is tracked by water usage, but if there's sewer pumping an extra, we can't really track that extra sewer, so we, that's what, that was something that we did with both Loves and Maverick. And there's also the County Road thirty-two, and thirty-two point four, County Road seventy-one point one dedication, those will be dedicated to City of Trinidad, and they are getting pretty majorly improved, I think, if, I don't know if you can go out there right now, because it's, it's getting improved now. So, they're starting to use their, their utility extensions, they're going to rip up the Thai road, everything's going to be ripped up, but then, they're going to replace it, it's going to look really nice in the end, and the city will get good, good streets dedicated to them, which is very important to us. And then one last thing, is this annexation agreement is just going to replace the pre-annexation agreement. We've already agreed to give utilities, we agreed, now we're just going to try to tidy it up, get that pre-annexation agreement in the past, and language is very similar between the two. That's all I got.
All right, it's Mr. Williams.
I mean, effectively, this is just a housekeeping mission. Yes. Okay. I have no further questions.
No questions.
I got time, kidding, no.
No questions, Mr. Williams.
Has it been relatively easy to work with Maverick?
Yes, they are a really good group. They, the GC's been easy to work with, which is important. It's kind of funky, because they're in the county, they were in the county, now they're coming in the city, and some of those little issues, but they've been really, really good to work with. There was one little hiccup with the County Road thirty-two point four, and seventy-one point one are in CDOs right away, so we had to get a CDO access permit to run our utilities, and because it's city utilities, we, we can't, that was something that caught everyone, including Los Angeles County off guard, caught some of the CDO guys off guard, so, but it wasn't a big deal, we worked through it, worked with Maverick really well, and then got that done, and, yeah, they're moving, moving through. I don't quite know when they're going to be open, but it's, it is coming pretty quickly.
Is the ten thousand dollar dump fee, is that per year or per day?
It's just a one-time fee. It's similar to like a TAF fee, kind of, that's how we treated it, because we do, we, that's kind of a many that attracts a little bit of extra people, that's, they're really big on it. Maverick and Love's, they really like to have that dump fee, that RV dump, just because it does attract that extra couple people, but, you know, they're getting it all year, so they, yeah, it is, it's a one-time fee, though, similar to TAF fee.
All right. Any other questions? I need a motion?
Who?
Mr. Shu motions?
Sir.
Mr. Thurman, is that you?
Yep.
Seconded, call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego? Yes. Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Great, thank you.
Take a glass of wine.
I know, but you can see my voice is going, you'll understand why, when I give you my report. I wanted to lead off by congratulating and thanking the mayor for representing us on CBS Evening News. It was pretty amazing to see Trinidad covered on the national news. I loved it. Yes, we also want to thank all those faces that we recognized. A lot of our community was represented from the creative industries. We want to thank the fire department. If you were out on Saturday for the Armed Forces Day Parade, there's really nothing more majestic than our ladder truck with a huge American flag hanging from it. So, thanks to the chief and the fire department for that. If you were at the water festival today, Ms. Lopez brought back amazing pictures. We want to thank our fire department, our water department, our gas department, and of course, the amazing Ms. Karen Wolf, who told kids all about water and plants all day today. What we're doing and what the Perrys have done with that festival is amazing. Water is our most valuable resource. We have so many angels from our past, like Mr. Fernandez, who set us up to be successful in the future self-determination of water, and the fact that we honor that with our elementary age and our high school students is amazing, so thank you to all city staff for that. Oh, the library, thank you, Ms. Lopez, as I said, pictures. We also had our librarians out there today. Speaking of the library, one of the most important programs that we do all year long is the summer reading program, and that's going to be kicking off at Chaminade Park on June eleventh, about eight-thirty in the morning, so if you don't, if you haven't stopped in the library lately, stop and get the information about the summer reading program. I remember as a kid, I did that every summer. And then I also want to remind you about Santa Fe Trail Days. That's happening June thirteenth and fourteenth, just outside here. We're going to have amazing slate of activities. I also want to let you know that on June, Friday, June thirteenth, we'll be setting up for Santa Fe Trail Days. City Hall will not be closed, but it might be inaccessible. We will be answering the phones, we will be taking utility payments. If we need to help somebody get access to City Hall, we'll do our best to do that, but we are going to have to shut off the parking lot to get everything set up for the festival, which starts after hours, about three o'clock, well, end of the day, toward three o'clock that day. So, just want to make sure you know we are open for business, but we will be a little bit difficult to get to on that Friday. We'll be doing public service announcements, so you're going to see that starting to go out, so people will know. Let's see, in my world, I've met with six city departments so far, and interacted with approximately seventy employees. They've been amazing meetings, taking about an hour, an hour and a half with each department. I've been to the police department twice, I've been to gas, power, and light, community center, fleet, and public works. I'm going to finish up this week with the fire department and development services. Be at the welcome center next week, and the water department. I'll be at Space to Create and the animal shelter. So, I think by the end of the month, I'm going to head most, all of the employees, I expect by this Friday, I'll probably have about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty handshake. I'm learning a lot, I'm learning a lot about how we do our work and how we deploy. I'm hearing directly from the field, and that- I'm hearing directly from the field, and that's been invaluable. Things that they've been thinking about or things that they've been wondering about. A lot of ideas, my mind's churning. I've set off the alarm at City Hall twice now because I get here so early in my code. I, I don't know how to interrupt yet, but hopefully tomorrow.
It's horrible.
The police department doesn't have to come out and help me. I get in the building. I started my union outreach, I'll be finishing that up this week. Just doing a sit-down, just going through the contract, trying to help understand what some of the overarching issues are going to be. I know we'll be talking about that this year. As, as Councilmember Trejo said, we attended the CML district meeting in Pueblo. It was really fun. We were kind of the star of the show. Before they even finished the sentence, who is going to volunteer? Both Councilmember and Felicia threw their hands up in the air and volunteered us. So we'll be welcoming all of the communities from Los Angeles County, Orfano and Pueblo in the fall to our district meeting. And our clerks have volunteered to put together something fantastic, so we're excited about that. I've met with all eighteen direct reports. And I've also identified some other reports that don't report directly to the city manager, but they run critical programs. And maybe they're reporting to another department head, but really, the city manager has an interest in that work. So working through those meetings, starting my council one-on-one. Sorry if I had to cancel on you this last week. I, I did come down with a little bit of, of the crud, as you can hear. But I'm looking forward to continuing those, and I think I have every single one of you, except maybe Mr. Chu on the schedule, so I'll, I'll track you down. And I wanted to let you know that we've engaged a new executive search firm for the police chief. We're going to be going with KRW. KRW is a firm that's based in Colorado. I know you know them from past work. KRW was, submitted a proposal for the combined proposal that you did for both the city manager and the police chief's search. And certainly SGR, I couldn't be more happy because I'm sitting here, right? So SGR was great in the city manager's search. KRW is really specializes in, and as, we were talking earlier today in trying, in creating the justification for bringing them on, that all three principals, former police chief of Colorado Springs, who was also the city manager for a number of years before they went to Strong Lake, former police chief of Arvada for twenty-two years, former deputy chief in Aurora. So these are the principals. They're going to be coming down the first of June. They're going to be doing focus groups throughout the community. They're going to be meeting with community members. We may be reaching out to you to sit down with some of them. But most importantly, they're meeting with all the officers. They're meeting with all the command staff, all the detectives and the dispatchers. And the intent with that is to really understand what our challenges are and what we're facing. They're also going to do an expedited review. So we hoping to have it, the profile developed in June. It'll be out in July. We'll be interviewing in August, and hopefully, we will have a police chief by September one. I'm very pleased with the initial discussions with this group, and I will be keeping you updated. Okay, that's my report, unless you have questions for me.
I have.
No questions. Okay, anybody have a question?
Okay. Thank you.
I'm with her.
You should take that shirt off.
No, I, I don't have a report. I'll do my report in executive session, maybe.
That's a whole, thank you.
Yeah, I know, told me for it to. I yield my kind.
Item number eleven, gives executive session, eleven A, here at Compton, with the city's attorney, further listening, receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CML Section twenty-four dash six, four oh two four B, avoidance of legal liability and discussion of pending legal matters. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So who?
Oh, I'll yield to Councilwoman Trejo.
Okay, Erin and Aaron. Call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes. Should take a couple of minutes for everybody.